See the roll call, please.
Mayor Roland Dykes.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Present.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
I'll assume that everyone has had a chance to read, go through the minutes from previous meeting. If not, give you a few seconds to look those over. Are there any additions, subtractions, deletions from previous meetings? And if not, will entertain a motion to approve those meetings as presented?
Make a motion to approve the meetings.
Say it. Alright, we have a motion on the board to approve the minutes as presented. They're properly seconded, will approve by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. We have a proclamation of recognition of citizens by his mayor, and that would go for recognition of Cock County habitat for humanity for receiving the 2018 property improvement grant.
Yeah, this is a grant that Mr. Fincham put in the budget, of course, the mayor's approval, that allows for either private property owners, low-income private property owners, or nonprofit organizations to make improvements to a property that is dilapidated or is at risk of a tree limb, something like that. And Ronnie, what Ronnie did was, it's a match grant, like our facade grant, and what Ronnie did was get Erby and Posey's to basically donate time and labor as a match. I mean, they didn't donate at all, it was a discounted price, but as a match to the grant. And what he's been able to do, and Ronnie, you can come up and speak about it if you'd like, but we're gonna be, he's gonna be clearing off a lot, two lots on Frog Pond, and the structure, that dilapidated structure on White Oak is down, and plans are, of course, to use that for habitat homes in the future. And so, this is, that amount is what, basically, the city used to beautify, well, it's working on beautifying, but improved to pieces of property that are owned by habitat that will eventually have new homes on them.
Ronnie, would you like to come forward?
Yes, put me on the clock, Ronnie. Shut up. Thank you, thank you, Gary. Thank you, guys. The money, I think, was $8,320, and we squeezed every thing we could possibly get out of that sucker. We got, we worked on two lots in Frog Pond. One, I think, Mayor, was a store at one time, a little lot. What we intend to do on that little lot, it's not big enough to do a standard home, what we'll do is do a mini-home on that lot, with the approval of Gary tomorrow. And on the White Oak property, the only thing we like on the White Oak property, having it ready to dig the footers, is the demolition of 13 trees. Guys, that lot, if you haven't seen that lot up there, the limbs ran all the way across that property, halfway across the other property, and of course, the root system follows those limbs, so we've got a problem up there. What we're gonna have to do, we'll, with the demolition work on that, we'll dig what we can dig, and the big ones, we'll just, we'll auger them down to the ground and cover them up. But anyway, I want to thank you all so very much, and hope we can do more work in the future. I have sent out letters to purchase 15 tracts of similar properties, have their cul-de-sac properties, in that same neighborhood up there. Mayor, I haven't had any reply yet, but maybe we will. Again, thank you, guys, so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a presentation for you, please. Alderman, come forward. Have a picture and a presentation. Regina, do you want us here?
Yes.
James, will, is Gary, Gary's here?
Yeah, Gary. Thank you.
Thanks, Ronnie, for what I've been doing up there. Looking for you, I bet. Been up there looking for you.
Next item on the agenda is the communications from the city administrator. Mr. Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, of course, already been reported, and the news media is to reaffirm that the work has been finalized downtown on Broadway, the utility upgrades. We've had a lot of positive comments about it being over, a lot of people's gotten used to, know it had to be done, but I've had several people to express their happiness, me included.
Yeah, Billy and too, don't you?
Since it's done, but that has done, been finished, and hopefully, the state will be on schedule, and will come through and grind and repave in the spring. You never know what they're gonna do for sure, but that's the plan right now. They've been on the drag of defeat, but we're hoping they don't. Like I say, I've had a lot of complaints about the rutness of the road. Is there anything to be done? Of course, there isn't. And, but it is, it's teeth jarring if you come down through there at much speed, you really have to go slow. Also, to report that we have begun the budget process, Tina had her first meeting with the department today, and so, we've got that process begun. Once she has met once with each department and has preliminary budget, then we'll go back through, and she and I will meet with them to finalize. And so, that process has begun. We've also begun the process with the police department of working on, doing some fine tuning to the general orders down there, some things where the laws have changed, and we need to change some wording, just a little bit of housekeeping, and also, some modifications we feel like will be good. And we hope to come back in March with that for the council to consider, to update the general orders, which is just a, it's just a, another, it's an operations manual for the police department that talks about policies and procedures to carry out police work. And so, hopefully, we'll have that for you to consider at the next meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay.
I know, I think the vice mayor was, he had something he just wanted to say.
Just say one word. I always thank every department, just like the rest of us, we all do it together. Everybody thanks all the departments for the work you do. I'd sort of like to special pick out Mark Robinson this time, 'cause I'm reading through his reports and stuff. I know he's been on the ball, and he's done a lot of work, and I know you're dealing with people that don't have pride, but I think you're stepping on some toes, you're beginning to get it cleaned up. Mr. Ball, I appreciate what you do, I can tell the difference in the community where you're at. Keep up the good work. I appreciate what you all are doing to clean this place up. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Next on the agenda is the Department of Boards, Commissions, and Committees. And first is discussion of appointment to the Police Civil Service Board. Christopher Eric Gregg was appointed by the police department. Any discussion?
Well, that's just, yeah, that's the one lady, that was their appointment, they weakest announced. That's how we do it, just announce that one because it's, they're, it's voted on by the board.
Sorry, bring that in, okay. Then, consideration of reappointment to the Beer Board, Mr. Dennis Thorn. So, we will need a motion to approve that one.
I was making a motion to reappoint Mr. Thorn.
Yes, I already got you, Steve, I'm sorry.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry.
You were second.
I can't hear.
Okay. We've got a motion by Luanna, and Steve seconds, okay?
I'll talk louder next time.
Alright.
We have a motion on the board, then. Any other discussion? If not, we'll, the motion has been properly seconded, will approve by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Reports from committees, Canada Preservation Alliance.
We have the first draft of the plan set back from MBI for the building. We had comments, were due, first round of comments were due Friday. They're gonna take those comments into consideration. I have asked for an estimation on what they think the current rehab work's gonna cost us total, because if it is over the budget, then I'm going to go into witness protection because I'm afraid of what Carlene will do to me. But, we've, I think we've come a long way on, and I'm pretty confident about it now. I was iffy about it the first time we were going to bid, and we were very rushed on it, for all of you that were here and remember it. But, since then, I have, a lot of things have been made very clear about what the, what's going on in that building. We found out that the HVAC units on top were good, so we saved a couple hundred thousand dollars there, we're able to put it in different parts of the project. So, right now, I feel good about it, and hopefully, I keep on feeling good till sometime in the summer when we get to finally do the ribbon cutting.
Do you feel like everything be on schedule? You know, I was sort of like, Mr. Dyke, you know, had questions about the timeframe on it. Do you feel like in two or three months, it'll be pinched?
We're, it's a hundred-day build-out, according to the original estimation. I don't know if it changes any, since we're not putting the units on top, because you gotta have a crane to do that stuff. I don't know if that changes and takes time off. We are, but the first set of plans, we weren't finishing the back two rooms closest to Mulberry on the second floor, but, or not Mulberry, Prospect. But now, we've added them in as a, as an addition from the first time, so I don't know if that adds time on it, you know, so I'm, I'm getting, yeah. And ARC, the grant that's paying for a good chunk of it, they require a little bit extra time on the bid, so that would, normally, if, once we got the plan set, we could, we could bid the project immediately, but we've gotta sort of go by their timeline before we can do that. So, hopefully, by the middle to end of March, we will have the bids out, and then start in construction early to mid-April. And that's just my, that's my, that's my head timeline, you know?
It just looks like a lot of work, and some, gonna have to pep it up a little bit, it looks like.
Any other discussion, questions? Thank you, Gary. On the, next on the agenda is old business, unfinished business. We're looking at consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2019-01, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
And Mayor, I'll read the captions of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance 2019-01, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2018-2019. And I need, Mayor, we probably need a roll call.
Okay. A roll call?
I'd have a motion first.
You need a motion first?
Motion to approve is written.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion on the board to approve, and this property's seconded, will approve by the normal sign of aye.
Aye. But on this, we need a roll call.
We need a roll call.
On an ordinance, yes.
On an ordinance, alright.
I think, barefoot procedure.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Okay, we have, the motion has been properly seconded, please approve by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. New business. Discussion of annual report from Brown, Jake, and McDaniels for the audit of fiscal year
Evening, Mayor and Alderman.
Good evening.
We have completed the audit back at the end of December, and I think you all have had the audit booklet distributed to you, and maybe you've had a chance at least to look through it. And after I make a few comments, I'll entertain any questions that anyone might have. But, overall, of course, the audit is an audit of the primary government and all of its departments, which in this case, also includes not only the city's funds, but also the Newport city schools, and also Newport utilities. So, we have a presentation on a government-wide basis of all of those departments and funds. And then, also, as an alternative presentation, of course, it's presented in financial statements on the fund level, which you're probably used to seeing a little more often because it more than mirrors your budgetary process. But, if you'll turn in your booklet, in the table of contents, you'll see various sections, and I'll just point out the ones that I might cover. The others, you will, can look at them if you have any questions or develop any tonight or later, you can certainly feel free to call us. But, we have an introductory section that's prepared by your staff, and then we have a financial section that includes the independent hours report. I'll briefly go over that in just a moment. Then there's a management discussion analysis that comes from your management, and then the basic financial statements, which include both the government-wide presentation and the fund financial presentation. Then, there's a series, after the note disclosures of required supplementary information, most of which is required under governmental accounting standards to be presented for a annual report. Most of that has to do with pension participation or post-employment benefit participation by the entity and its various components, which include the city, the schools, and the utilities. Other supplementary information's included, starting on page 102. Most of that information's required by the comptroller's office here in Tennessee to be presented, and they do publish a annual, an updated annually, an audit manual for those who are participating in audits of state subdivisions or political subdivisions like the city, and most of this data is required by it. Then there's some other statistical information that's unaudited, starting on page 119. That's some miscellaneous data, and because your sanitation fund is collapsed into your general fund, the state requires a look at your sanitation expenditures individually, so there's a schedule of that there. Again, that's a state-required schedule, just like the AWWA reporting worksheets related to water metrics that is presented, related to the Newport water and sewer systems. Then, the last part of the report is additional reports from us. There's two reports there. One, on the internal control and compliance at the financial statement level on page 123 and 124, and then there's an additional report on 125 and through 129 that's on federal, major programs for federal assistance. If an entity receives more than $750,000 in a year that's expended, then that additional layer of compliance testing has to occur, and this additional report is released because of the federal assistance at the school primarily, and occasionally, here at the city, you went over that $750,000 threshold, so this report's required, and the additional testing is required. So, that kind of covers the report. If you'll turn over to page four, this is a standard audit report. It tells the reader in the first paragraph of page four what we're auditing, which is the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the major funds, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city of Newport, and its financial statements, which includes the notes as listed in the table of contents. There's a paragraph there about management's responsibility for the presentation, and management reviews these financial statements, even though we prepare it, they accept responsibility for them. And then, the next section, three paragraphs, talks about the auditor's responsibility. And in this case, in the first paragraph, it outlines the fact that, under auditor responsibility, that we're auditing the city government and the school system, but we are not auditing the Newport utilities, which makes up a large percentage of the business-type activities, and we do rely on other auditors' report in giving our opinion about the financial statements where it includes Newport utilities. So, that's discussed in that first paragraph, under auditor responsibility. Second paragraph tells about some standard language to try to help the reader understand what an audit is. It's selective testing based on risk assessments of the auditor. And then, on page five, you can see, we state at the top of that page, we believe our audit evidence that we gathered is sufficient to give an opinion, and we give an opinion in the next paragraph, that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects without any modification. So, this is a clean opinion, without any exceptions, on the financials. And then, we talk about a change in accounting principle to draw emphasis to the fact that during the year, a new GASB, or governmental accounting, statement was issued on the treatment of post-employment benefits for retirees after they leave your employment, and how you determine the actuarial value of that liability and show it or reflect it in the government-wide financial statements at all of your entities or funds that offer post-employment benefits for things such as health care or life insurance or so forth. And so, that is discussed, and it talks about, we made a prior period adjustment to reflect a beginning amount of the liability at the first of the year, and that transition caused the restatement or a decrease in the net position of the governmental activities by about a million and a half dollars to reflect that liability that had never been on the financial statements before, and measured in that regard. And then, there's other matters, talked about the required financial information, and then the other financial information, which is supplementary, that we give an in-relationship clean opinion on that. And then, finally, at the bottom of page six, we talk about these other two reports that we've issued to draw attention to the reader that they exist, and they should read those in conjunction with the audit. From that point on, we have the standard items that would be included in an annual financial report, a management discussion analysis, and I won't go through that in detail, other than if you'll, I'll draw your attention over to some tables on page 10. These kind of give you an overview of the financial performance. You can see on the governmental activities, which would be the city and the schools, in that table, there's a 18 column and a 17 column, and you can see that, overall, the net position, measured on the government-wide basis for the governmental activities, was almost 20 and a half million dollars. If you turn over to the table on page 12, you can see for the year, the government activities are shown here as to revenue and expenses, and we finally come to a bottom-line number that the net position for the city and the schools changed about $2.9 million on the positive side, on the government-wide basis, which is very good. I will call attention to the fund-level statements, starting on page 27. Well, actually, there's a balance sheet on page 24, and 29, or 25, and a bridge statement on 26 that connects that back to the government, and you can see all, wide basis, all these adjustments that had to be made. But on page 27, the major funds are displayed here in columns, which is the general fund and the general purpose school fund. And you can see there, for the year, the general fund at the bottom had an increase in revenues, over expenditures of $810,603 for the year, which is positive growth in your fund balance. So, if you looked at that balance at the bottom, which is your ending fund balance, $6.8 million, that's about 63%, 64% of your annual expenditures, if you took your expenditure total and you added your transfers out to the schools and to other funds. So, you're, I know that in the past, when we've met, we've talked about a target above 50% would get you in good financial position, and some of you may remember when that number was 20% or less. So, over the last four to five years, you've made great headway in trying to get your financial stability back where it needed to be, and I compliment you on that. If you look back on page 25 real quick, you'll see that fund balance is broken down into several numbers at the bottom of that first column. And, you know, because certain amounts of fund balance is either restricted or committed or assigned, and you can see various items here where there's a signed fund balance for particular programs or services, and restricted fund balance related to other items. And so, at the very bottom number, there's about $6,400,000 there, $6,373,569, that's really unassigned fund balance. So, that's saying, that is equity or fund balance that you have available to spend for budgetary expenditures going forward, and reserves. There's actually a comparison that starts on page 33, where you can actually see the general fund, original budget, final budget, and actual comparisons, if you want to do that. After that, the school system is presented, of course, there's a presentation of the utilities in here. I won't go through that, I'm sure Mr. Ray has had a presentation at his board meeting. The notes start on page 48, they're quite lengthy. They do go into a lot of detail, and one of the reasons they're lengthy is because of pension plans and post-employment benefit required disclosures, along with quite a few other disclosures. But, that goes through, really, the bulk of the report, all the way back through page 91. And then, that's followed by the required information and supplementary information. There's various things in here that you might want to look at, debt service by year for your governmental funds, and, of course, there's presentations in here related to the utilities also, they're required to be included. Last, before I take any questions, I'll point you to page 123. These are the letters that I mentioned earlier. The first one on 123 is that the financial statement level related to internal control and compliance. We're not required to give an opinion about internal control and compliance, but we are required, as we make our audit risk assessments and our walkthroughs and our review of internal control, if we find something that we feel is a significant or a material weakness, we're required to report it in this section of this report, and you can read the definitions of what a significant deficiency and a material weakness is in the third paragraph. And we're happy to say that, for the second year in a row, we don't have any findings, which is great, so this is a clean letter. And then, starting on page 125 is the other report on federal programs. And again, we have certain programs that we have to test on a risk basis each year, and select of your federal assistance, and we've selected those major programs and tested them, and we don't have any findings related to compliance with those programs either. So, that letter's clean. Page 127 is a summary of that federal program. It tells, basically, that we had tested, if you look at the very bottom, we looked at the Department of Education, Title I at the school, 84.01, down in Section G, and that's the program we tested, and we had no issues. And then, finally, we did have one finding related to the schools on page 128. We discussed that with them, they responded, and they've supplied a corrective action plan on 129 that discusses that, and it was really timing related to file That discusses that, and it was really timing related to filing for reimbursements. And we have covered that with them thoroughly at that level. And they've made their response on page 129. So if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you. Also have with me tonight Haley Allen Slagel. Haley is our audit manager for this engagement and has been for several years. And we feel like she does a great job for the city of Newport in running the engagement on a daily basis.
Okay. Got a couple of questions.
Okay.
If you don't mind. On page 10, I think you mentioned that Newport Utility Board information is not included in this audit. Looks like a total net position of 20.5 million or so.
Well, their information is included, but we rely on other auditors in expressing our opinion about the data for them.
So is that, that number?
The business-type activities is the consolidation of their electric, water, and sewer system. On page 10, under column, business-type activities, column 2018.
Okay.
That is correct.
And the other question I'm curious about on page 27, for the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for governmental funds.
Yes.
There was, it looks like at the bottom, there's the fund balances are, well, you can see what those are, 6.8 million, 2 million, whatever. But under general purpose fund, for instance, it shows a negative, I'm assuming these parentheses are, indicate a negative amount.
Yes.
Is that a carryover from a previous year?
No, that is the results of the current year before the city's transfer to the schools has occurred.
Okay.
So you've got their general purpose school fund revenues from outside sources and their share of property tax and sales tax included in the revenue total at the top there in that column. Then you have their educational expenditures, which was 5,765. So at that point, they did have a deficit before applying the funds that are transferred from the city government to them on an annual basis, which in this particular year was 741,000 dollars.
Okay.
So they did end up with a positive after that transfer of 221,294.
I'm assuming that explanation would suffice for other governmental funds with column there too?
Yes. The other governmental funds, and those are combined in the supplementary information. So if you want to see, those don't require major fund presentation in the front of the statements, but they are in the supplementary information. So you can flip back, for instance, to page 106, and you can see the combination of all those, which includes some city funds and some school funds added together. The schools have a cafeteria fund, they have a federal projects fund. Here at the city, you've got a drug fund that's included in that number. You also have a city capital fund for capital outlays. And the total of all of those total up to the non-major presentation. So if you looked on page 107 at the far right, you'd see where these totals are coming from for the other governmental funds. It would include a combination of both smaller school funds and smaller city funds.
Okay.
And then, of course, for the general purpose school fund and the general fund both, there is a budget comparison presentation that starts on page 33. And the general fund's presented first, and then after that, you'll see the general purpose school fund on a budget item basis.
Yeah, you just answered my last question then. I was on page 33 there. So that's as far as I got.
Okay.
So anyone else have questions?
Are you real satisfied with everything so far going on?
Yes.
That's what I.
Think it's, really, you've got a good staff that I think is doing great work for you. And I think the information you're getting is, is very accurate even on an interim basis. We had, you know, very few adjustments. As the last thing here, I will pass out a letter. These are standard communications that we're required to tell the board. I can just briefly talk about those after you get them passed. But for the most part, these are just items, kind of housekeeping, that I'm supposed to discuss with the governing body. And then if there's no other questions about this letter or the report. But again, if you're looking at the report, and I wouldn't advise you to look at it after 8:00 at night.
I did get a good nap in on that one.
Unless you really, yeah, unless you really want to just go ahead and go to bed. Because it's, us CPAs kind of thrive on this, but we know the general population is a snoozer. So.
And I only got to page 33.
But on this letter, we point out what we've audited and the fact that we've covered certain aspects of the audit in our engagement letter dated February 27, 18. We talk about significant findings during the audit. We only had that one deficiency, which we looked at, related to the school system. And applying for reimbursements on a timely basis, that was on one grant. So we tested the major programs and the internal control. We had no other issues. Qualitative aspects, the accounting policies were consistent. We did have some new application pronouncements on page two. The one that had the biggest impact, of course, was the post-employment benefit calculations on an actuarial basis. They were almost mirrored how you would actuarially calculate pension liability. That would be GASB 75 that was applied. The others really didn't have any effect. All transactions noted were, we didn't see anything that didn't have an authoritative consensus and guidance. Accounting estimates are integral to the presentation of financial statements. We talk about two of the more important ones, which is depreciation expense, and that's only on the government-wide statements. Really doesn't affect your fund level statements. The estimated life of those infrastructure and capital assets that range anywhere from a police cruiser to a street or a streetlight. We calculate or test depreciation expense on those presentation. Pension liability, it depends on a lot of estimates on inflation rates, the rise in pay increases for employees, the average retirement age of employees that's assumed. And of course, you all are in various components of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. They supply those actuarial reports. They hire the actuary. They supply the reports to the city, and the entries are subsequently made at the government-wide level only. It really doesn't affect your fund statements. We encountered no difficulties dealing with management. As far as corrected and uncorrected misstatements, we had some entries, but there were none that were not expected or of a material nature. We had no disagreements with management. We did ask for a management representation letter that outlined the inquiries we'd already made. We received that letter from management. We're not aware of any other management consultations with other independent auditors like second opinions on accounting applications. Other audit findings and issues, we're not aware of any. We do answer questions from time to time from management about the application of accounting, but our answers were never worried about, you know, our professional relationship or what our response is, is a matter of whether we're retained or not. Other matters, we talked about the fact we issued this other data we've already covered in the back of the report, and talks about the in-relationship opinion there. And then finally, we talk about the fact that this is restricted for your use only.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Ray. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
And I'd like to, I'd like to say that in my, in my experience, an audit is clean and with only one significant, wasn't really a finding, is rare. And I'd like to congratulate James and his team on doing an outstanding job on having an audit like this.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. Consideration of First Reading of Ordinance Number 2019-02, Amending the City of Newport Municipal Title and Alcoholic Beverages, Changing the Alcohol Wait and Hours of Sales.
Mayor, the chairman of the beer board had hoped to be here, but he said it's possible that he did not, and I don't see him here. The state of Tennessee changed the hours that the liquor stores could operate on Sundays. And the beer board discussed that and decided that they would like to recommend that other stores be afforded the same opportunity. They didn't feel like it inspired that the liquor stores could open at a certain time and that convenience stores had to wait till a later time to be able to sell. So they're just asking that the playing field be leveled for the, for the other stores to have the same benefit as the state liquor stores.
Beer board, everybody was in agreement with that?
Yes, this is a recommendation from the beer board.
Need to read that into the audit?
Yes, yes. I'll attempt to read that. It's ordinance number 2019-02, An Ordinance Amending the City of Newport Municipal Code, Title VIII, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter One in General, Sections Eight-101, Intoxicated Liquors, Prohibited Exemption, and Chapter Two Beer, Section Eight-201, Possession and Sale Lawful, Subject to State Law, and this article and Section Eight-204, Errors of Sale.
Okay. We probably need a roll call on this one.
Yes, sir.
Need roll call, please?
We need a motion first.
Motion first?
Yes.
All right.
Make a motion. Second.
Second, Steve?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Oinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Last mayor, Mike Prophet.
Yes.
Okay. Motion first. Motion carries. I don't hear no nays, so. Okay, I see, Consideration of Resolution Number 2019-01, Authorizing the City of Newport to Accept the Tennessee Department of Transportation Multimodal Grant.
So we got another grant. It's a big one. This is, Ms. Tina tells me that I can reasonably spend $50,000 a year on sidewalk improvements and extensions. But, so this is going to cost us around 50, but we'll do 20 years' worth of work in extensions over the next two, it'll probably take about two years because it's a state grant. We were, it's a, told it's a million-dollar project, 95.50, or 95.5, so our match is going to be at least $50,000. It's going to run in front of, it's, there's nothing, there's no structure on it, but it's where the sidewalk ends on Cosby Highway. If you're headed north, we mow that, right? That's something we maintain. So it's going to go down, turn the corner, go up Broadway or go west on Broadway to Debbie's there, the Hedrick Drive intersection. On the other side of the road, we're going to start there and then connect where the sidewalk ends at the Memorial Building. There's going to be pedestrian crossing, poles and signals upgraded at the Hedrick and Broadway intersection, as well as the Cosby Highway-Broadway intersection. And that's estimated around, total around a million dollars. We were one of 15 counties and cities selected. We're on a list with Nashville, Knoxville, Mount Juliet, Cookeville, Moorestown. So, you know, I don't know how many people applied. I hope it wasn't just 15, because it sounds a lot cooler if it was, if it was a lot more than that. But we, what I'm, the resolution would authorize us to accept it. I think it's a great opportunity for us. I think you guys are going to be on board with it. It's, it gets us a big jump on our pedestrian infrastructure improvements. And we, oh, another point I was going to make, but oh, well. Do you guys have any questions about the project? This is, if you, if you couple this with the money that we've got, federal or state, over the past couple of years, we're up to around 2.8, maybe over 3 million. I was trying to do the math before I came down here. And grant funding that we've received that we're either in the middle of or we've completed or will, and once we accept this, going into the future.
I think, I don't, did I misunderstand when you said 95.5? I thought it was 950,000, right?
Yeah, it, yeah, it's, the total project's a little over a million dollars. The most they'll give is 950,000. That's what's on the table for us.
Right.
So we will match with at least 50, and if there's over, just we'd have to pay that. But we wouldn't authorize any work. If, if they came back and said, "It's going to cost you, you know, 1.7 million dollars," we'd say, "No, thank you." And we, and we can amend, so if at some point the scope of the project is going to go over in a certain way, we can take out some part of it and then just keep our costs.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Okay. You want to read that into the?
We just need a motion on that.
Okay, just a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right. You have a motion that's been properly seconded?
I've got it over here.
Seconded.
I think Luanna seconded?
No, I've made it.
She made it and Mike seconded, okay. It's properly seconded. Approved by a normal sign of aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
950,000, Richard.
Yes.
Consideration of Taking Honeybee Lane Into the City of Newport.
Okay. After this, I promise I'll leave. I was asked if we could, Mr. Hicks asked me about paving Honeybee Lane about a year ago. And I, when I started looking up some things, we don't have an easement right-of-way on Honeybee Lane at all. The private property owners have agreements within their deeds that allow each other to cross, that allow each other to cross their property, get to their property, of course. But we do not have right-of-way to maintain. So we hadn't been, we weren't picking up garbage until Mr. Fincham caught on to it and instructed us to go up there and get garbage. And the road is in bad shape, and we need to pave it. And we can't legally pave it until we have right-of-way on it. So what, and we have a, we have a private citizen who is attempting to do a subdivision of her property. She can't legally do it until we have this as a proper, properly take it in as a city street. It came in in the early 80s, yes?
Well, I think maybe in 79.
Oh, goodness, okay. So the.
Not sure, but I think probably around 79.
It's been in the city for quite a while. They've been paying their taxes. What normally the city would do in a situation where it was a request to take in a street as a city street, we would request the property owners to pay for the survey so that we could have, we could make out the proper deedage for the easement. And then we would require them to spend the money to bring the road up to street, to city standard. What I'm asking is that the city pay for, since they've been paying property taxes for four, how old, 40 years almost? So I'm going to ask us to pay for the survey. And of course, Terry will draw up the legal documents, and you guys would vote on it, I don't know, in the next month or whenever we get it done. This will also allow Ms. Grooms to approach the planning commission in good faith that we are going to take this in as a city street so that she can complete the property subdivision and complete your, you're doing it, you're selling part of it, correct? Is that?
I'm looking at my options.
Okay, all right. So, let me check my notes. Yeah, I think if you can just, if you, if you're okay with this, to let me keep working on it in good faith and allow us to pay for the funding, and we're, and we will, of course, pave the road. It's gonna, there's some parts of the road we can't just pave it. We gotta, well, it's paving, but you gotta do a little bit extra work. So it'd be just slightly more expensive than a regular paving job, but I don't, the way it looks, I don't know if we've ever paved it. And if we have, we did it illegally because we didn't have it. April, don't take that and make it into something. But yeah, we would have paved it without right-of-way because it was just an oversight whenever the property was brought into the city limits.
Appreciate you helping, Ms. Groom, trying to help this get done too. Appreciate what you're doing too.
Your request is to... Your request is to...
Is it, I don't know if we need a proper vote, do we, Terry? Because I'm not necessarily asking for any sort of...
Well, I think it would be good to have a vote authorizing the city to go ahead and have it surveyed.
Sure, okay.
And then we could present that, and assuming the council wanted to take in what the survey provided.
Gotcha.
We could vote on that, and then get the property owners to...
Yeah, the property owners have already verbally agreed to donate the easement, so we're not, we shouldn't be getting in any legal battles to get the 50-foot right-of-way and whatnot.
Okay.
Gary?
Ma'am?
If I may?
Please.
Do you have an idea of how much this would cost, and did you intend for the motion to include a budget amendment, or...
No, it can come out of regular paving. That was the intent, to come out of Ben's regular paving budget. The, are you asking about the surveying?
Well, the surveying and then also the paving.
The paving would come out of, it's not so much it would require moving money to the paving budget.
So this has come out of Ben's cap?
Yes. He's not here to say no, so it's definitely coming out of Ben's cap. In the surveying, I have a line item for planning that I can surely take it out of. It shouldn't be too much.
When I became aware of this, I was a relative, but Ms. Grooms made me aware of it. The folks up there did not have garbage pickup, and that the road was in really bad shape. So I got with Ben and went up to look at it, and I was amazed at how bad the shape it was in. And I asked Ben, you know, "Why have we allowed this road to get in this condition?" And he said that it was his understanding it was not in the city, and that's why, but he had not done anything with it, because he'd been told by, I think, Mr. Robinson, that it wasn't in the city. And so we looked into it, and it wasn't, so there wasn't anything we could do. We did begin the garbage pickup immediately when we found out it was not being picked up, but we couldn't do anything with the road because it had never been taken into the city. And we, I agree, Gary and I have talked about it a lot. I think we need to, we need to fix the road for them. They've been in it all this time, and they pay taxes on business that was sitting right there for years, and I think they deserve a decent street to drive on.
So just to make sure we understand the motion. You want, it is to continue doing the survey and working toward repaving, what is it called? Honeybee Lane?
Honeybee Lane, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? Questions to the motion? Okay? If...
I guess I'll make that motion.
You make the motion?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion on the board. It's been properly seconded. Were approved by a normal sign of aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Consideration of Authorizing Newport Utilities General Manager to Sign a Letter of Credit for Newport Utilities Related to the USDA RED-LG Loan, and to Sign for Annual Renewal Each Year.
Say that the past three times.
Yeah.
So y'all remember about a year or so ago, our board and the city council approved Newport Utilities to acquire a red-leg loan through USDA to help one of the local industries with a $1 million zero-interest loan. That loan requires reapproval every year, so that's what I'm here for tonight. To avoid having to come back, that request is also going to ask the city council to authorize the general manager to renew that each year rather than having to come back to the city council for approval every year. This may be, this may be never needed because we just found out yesterday that there's been an offer made on the RGE property, and RGE is working out the details to try to get that property sold. So part of the selling would require them to pay off the loan.
I would like to amend your request to some degree, and I don't know how the other council members feel about it, but I think we ought, we should delete that portion about annual renewal each year, and to have some, at least some oversight, because we did sign for it, right? So we'll just come back each year and renew it. Any other discussion about?
I agree.
Everybody understand what we're talking about? Just amended, amend that motion to sign for annual renewal each year by general manager. Instead, just them come back each year in case they don't sell it. So there is some other oversight other than Newport Utility Board. Okay? Is that amenable to you?
Sure is, yes.
Okay. We need a motion. We need a motion.
Make a motion.
Second. Mike seconded.
Okay, we have a motion on the board. It's been properly seconded and amended. Any other discussion? If not, will approve by a normal sign of aye?
Aye.
And all opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you all for what you did.
And Mayor, for the public information, we're going to meet tomorrow. The, this letter requires a certified copy of the minutes. It's my understanding we're going to meet tomorrow. I think Ms. Regina's going to stay up all night typing up the minutes for us, and we're going to meet tomorrow and hopefully approve the minutes.
We're just glad she's here tonight. She likes to come to the meeting.
Did we schedule that meeting for 3:00 or 3:30?
3:30.
3:30, okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Bids, purchases, and expenses. Consideration of bids for digital, and it says anti-log, but I'm sure that might be analog, radios for the fire department.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's, it's basically catching up. Maurice did change his, Chief Schultz changed his a couple of years ago, and basically, we have, you've seen my letter, I put in your, in your packets. We've gradually been changing over. We're not there yet. We put this in the budget net last year for this year so we can finish out and everything be ready to go when dispatch decides that the county wants to go there.
I didn't see the bid. Was this already in the budget?
Yes.
I'll have to look that up.
Yes, it's actually a little less than what's already in the budget. I think the budget's got, is it 25,000?
29.
29? Okay, and I think it comes up to less than 25,000.
Okay. Discussion?
Oh, no, all, everything, all the pieces are on the state contract, so it hasn't been dealt with.
So the, it's, the bids are not competitive bids, or just through the state?
No, it's all, it's all straight on the state contract with the same supplier that's basically doing the whole county right now.
Okay. All right. We have a motion.
Make a motion.
Seconded.
All right. We have a motion on the board, and it's been properly seconded. Please approve by a normal sign of aye?
Aye.
And all opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for the job you done.
The, Consideration of Bids for Playground Equipment For the Filbert Park on Fifth and Filbert Street.
Mr. Mayor, it is a budgeted line item. I put in your packets a picture of what we're trying to purchase from Game Time Equipment, and we would like to go through Sourcewell, which is a buying group, so that we can purchase this equipment and have it installed at Filbert and Fifth.
Is that amount at the bottom, is that 24,997?
I think we're within $2.37 of being right at 20, $25,000.
Couldn't manage to spend that $2.37.
We were lucky. We got it down under 25. That was the goal. It wasn't to spend 25, it was to get it under 25.
Okay. Any discussion?
Questions? Just for the record, this is a part of the improvements and upgrades that we've been in the process of doing, that is included all the satellite parks, trying to improve the services provided, what's there of a look. We, him's people have put a lot of hard work in to try and make the parks look better. I think anybody that's been by them that can, that looks at it can see a major difference to what they were about two years ago. Of course, the big, the big difference was at Brighttown, because we brought that one back from a green space, but we're also, each of the five satellite parks are seeing improvements, and Filbert was another park that really didn't have anything other than a basketball court, more or less. And so if you've not been by there, go by there, take a look at it. It's already looking much better, just in the improvements to the basketball court and having the small facility that we've been installing in all the satellite parks, but this is just the next step in that, in that improvement process.
Okay. All right, we have a motion.
Make a motion to accept that bid.
I'll take a second.
Wait a minute. Again.
I can hear, and I'm going to have to sit on that.
I'm watching a tennis match here.
We don't waste that bid.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the purchase of playground equipment for Filbert Park on Fifth and Filbert. It's been properly seconded. Please approve by a normal sign of aye?
Aye.
And all opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you for the job you done.
Thank you, Coach.
Okay. Comments from Citizens? Everybody's had enough today. Hearing none. Will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Being properly seconded. Please, please approve by a normal sign of aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.